Welcome to the City Council Business Meeting for Wednesday, the twenty-second, 2019. Please rise and collect your seat.
My point of view is to provide United States Mayor and two Republican lawmakers with a standing hand, motivation for our God, and universal for delivering justice across all.
Thank you. Mr. President, please.
Councilman Skerritt.
President.
Councilman Livingston.
President.
Councilman Cross.
President.
Councilman Taylor.
President.
Councilman Patstraw.
President.
Councilman Maslow.
President.
President Taylor is not here for President Popeye, and Councilman Maslow is the president chair.
We will have approval of the minutes from the May, every meeting, Councilman Skerritt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for your unanimous approval for this meeting minutes of May, 2019.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Okay, on to setting a public hearing, please.
City Council will hold a public hearing regarding proposed fiscal year forty-five GAFK agents as relates to the TDP ESP fund. The public hearing will take place on June fifth, 2019, at six thirty p.m. The City Council.
On the public comment, before that, uh, our city clerk here has put a public commentary, please.
City Council received a letter from the Alvin and the Mar. He's in opposition to rate hikes per water to resources in Arlington. The clerk's office will include this letter in the minutes.
Thank you. And on to public comment. Anybody wishing to come down, you have five minutes to speak. Please be respectful, and please move your hands. Thank you.
Also, thank you, Mr. President. It is Mark Thornton. Um, I wanted to discuss something with the City Council about, um, we need a curfew. We have these children that are out, I tell you, so two, one, two o'clock in the morning, and, um, and it's just really getting out of hand. The drug situation now is getting out of hand. We have more gangs up here than ever. Um, country town is full of drug dealers. I mean, you can't just walk outside and you'll see two or three drug transactions. And one of the things I can see, uh, my daughter's friend, who, uh, was thirteen years old, and all of a sudden she's pregnant, and this alarms me very much because of what I see out here every day. And, um, you know, I mean, I asked City Council for, um, any to go on, uh, pick their hat back when Mayor Bucci was in office, and, uh, you know, they had a curfew. And I just wanted you to see if you can look into that. And, um, personally, I've touched on this really, really, I think that's a weird discussion. I mean, it's really out of hand. And, um, and it's not going to get any better. And I just, uh, wish that somebody could do something about that because I think when I found out that my daughter's friend, at thirteen, is pregnant, she said, well, take it out to one o'clock in the morning. Why? Well, my mother lets me. And I said, well, why does she let you? Well, she's too busy getting high with her boyfriend. I've never really just stood before her. And, uh, I just, like I said, I just wish that City Council could do something about this situation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, my name is Nora Niggs. Hello. Um, I've been a wastewater operator at the Arlington Johnson City Justice Treatment Plan for fifteen years. Uh, I've been involved in the floods, both six and eleven, the wall collapse, other pitfalls, infrastructure deficiencies. Um, the picture, the payment is paying for the community about what our plan is not accurate. Uh, the statement that was made, we have never been in compliance with environmental standards, is untrue. When the EAF system, from the first upgrade was offline, we were not going to outpart. We were well below our, above the limits, even though the system was not structurally sound. And we had other deficiencies to overcome on top of just the structural problems. Even after the wall collapse and our process was instantly cut in half, we were extremely close to meeting permit. The other statement that I have issue with is about mismanagement. I believe that there needs to be some clarity on that because there are several facets of management involved with the plant. There's the day-to-day operations management, which is superintendent, business management department has. Um, there is the construction management, which is current Jingles, and they're overseen by project coordinator. There is also a sewer board, which is appointed by both mayors, and then there's the owners themselves. So, I can state per fact that the mismanagement does not fall on the shoulders of the day-to-day operations management, and there is no us against them attitude at the plant, between union members and management. We have had to work very closely together to keep that place running as efficiently as it does. In fact, after the wall collapse, it was deemed unsafe for union workers to be in that section, so management took it upon themselves to volunteer their time, lobby and ownership to clean screens, perform treatment processes, and get our numbers as close as we have them to permit. If it's the sewer board that he feels is dysfunctional, well, they're appointed by the owners, and they seem to be just as much in the dark about this whole prioritization process as we the employees are. Um, if the issue is with the construction management, that has nothing to do with employees or the day-to-day management or even the board as far as their saying. So I guess I'm clear on that statement because. And that being said, um, I believe the main questions to consider are, why is there a prioritization process right in the middle of a construction project when we have no solid data of what our costs are going to be? There's this huge rush in a few months between an RFP, which is over eight hundred pages, or a bidder to come in and comprehend and figure out that, and then guess at everything else because we don't even know how much of the cost us to run it because we haven't got online for so long. And unfortunately, it is continually being pushed further due to construction deadlines not being met. How can they accurately bid on a process that isn't operational? There's chemical use staff to make these punty number of oneness. And what would the owners have to use as a comparison? You know, just all the oneness of cost and staffing alone, it just seems like it's very rushed. So, like, more consideration, the questions we have. Um, a private company, I don't believe could run it cheaper than we could. They have to make a profit, they have investors, we run it at zero profit, and most poor decks, everybody cares. We are civil servants within this community. We have invested interest. This is our backyard. We probably can fish this one involved in that river. I don't think you're going to find anyone more passionate, driven to operate that plant as efficiently as we do. And why spend all that money time for you just to turn it over to a company whose interest is to profit, go outside this community, even overseas, and, and I just want to inter with you, we are a central public service, and we are passionate about our work and the environment, and we, and we're part of the call apart, and have been doing it, same process going in, it was before, and we're part of that part.
Thank you very much. Would you keep your hand down with that, too?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Tarkan Elazim, uh, and I want to talk about two things. Uh, obviously, the Boskoff's apartments arrangement, and then, uh, the mayor's prioritization scheme in the Justice Treatment Plan. Uh, first, Boskoffs, um, so Chris, now it's been about six weeks, maybe two months since I brought this up. Have you verified with Mr. Bob Murphy, if either or not, may have verified that Boskoffs put in the required one million dollars of repairs from the five-year agreement that was made six years ago? Still haven't. Okay, I'm going to go back to my seat after I speak. I'm going to foil for it. It takes me thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. As a resident, you have the responsible responsibility for your entire district, and you can't, you couldn't do that over six weeks. Incredible. Um, I am glad that the city attorney finally started to take one of my recommendations, which was stop pretending that there's a pilot agreement. I appreciate that they've dropped that language, and it's just a lease agreement, as it was in the IDA's meeting agenda when it was approved. It's a lease agreement. So I'd also like to know why IDA is still involved? If there's no pilot, why are they still involved? Is this just because the mayor doesn't want to accept responsibility for the structural repairs and daily maintenance or routine maintenance that they would be responsible for as P L D C is the principal owner? Uh, maybe that's in a lease agreement. Is a lease agreement going to be attached to this resolution? No? Public can't pick, see that? No? Okay, that's usually how this administration works. I would recommend you do that. Anytime that they're in your, uh, resolution or references, see attached, you should actually attach it for the public. So, after the Justice Treatment Plan, uh, the woman who just spoke, I think spoke far more eloquently than I could, um, but I, because I tend to be a bit brash, I will state that there is one reason why this is being fast-trapped, and that is Mayor David's political ambitions. He does not want responsibility for the impending, and we all know, significant rate hikes under his watch. He wants to blame it on a firm. It is absolutely insane, just as the woman spoke. You go ahead and ask for pilot. Imagine if you were to call someone in and ask for repairs in your house, contractor. Could give me a estimate? And he sent a P I O call over there on Saturday, and he said, no, no, I can't show you what your repairs are. What do you mean? I gotta... No, no, just go ahead and give me an estimate. That's literally what we all do. There's not enough data, there's no understanding of what the standards are, what the base, baselines are, and you're asking private firms to come in and just basically name their price. And because the mayor is politically motivated to protect his political persona, that's a shame. Because before the mayor switched directions completely and added two-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar project, top of the hundred and ten that had already been spent, and that would have been meeting all the D E C requirements despite his many, many mistruths and misstatements. I think the anticipated rate increase was eighty-two percent for the city of Arlington. Y'all know the document that's on, right? I think that was before. So, why don't you all do a study? You said this is just like the fire parking study. Well, then where's the study? This is not the same thing. Where's the study? God, is there a study? Could you analyze what the benefits and drawbacks would be of different management options? Because you said it's the same thing. Where is it? Do you have it, Chris? Should I foil you for it?
You do what?
Does it exist? No, it doesn't.
Well, it's real information to the study. We're just trying to get information.
This is an RFP. This is requesting proposals to run it. This is not a study. Those two are very different. It is insane. It is insane that this body completely advocates of responsibilities to protect the job fair for the reuseers again and again in this curse.
You're welcome to the City Council. I watched the YouTube video, the pre-video meeting for privatization, and I was horribly disappointed in you, and this is the first and only source to come finding out the existence of this scheme. It is still all I have heard. Shame on you. The advantage of leadership is not in running the staff. I have no information to pass on to my very disoriented employees and retirees, while I have no idea if they will continue to receive medical home fits. And now I'm getting a crush on information with us from the hitters, or up to sixty, so they can have us providing information that used to turn around and tell you how they can do it for less. Now I'm getting, I'm sorry, repeating my... Why should I help them with several of the same firms that have been begged for years to provide full bits of information so we can plan a budget, and they have been silenced? In that video, I've noted five times the consultant or C staff ran a brand-new plant. This is not true. It is addressed reconstruction. Fifty percent of structures were the same structures in better places in the nineteen-seventies. Eighty percent may be new equipment. The plant has also enforced the correct home sites in the design of the new plant, where not part of its structure is going forward. We have been continually treating rates. The only brief shutdown gave the gas sector time to incorrectly saw four large, vast fat orders of the manufacturer's recommendations. Those are still in place, and the owners of the manufacturer states it will likely cause future malfunction. I recommend the owners to not accept this work until it is corrected. A statement in the press from the City Mayor saying the plant has never been in compliance with environmental standards, and this is the first time in a long time it will be. Again, not true. The plant has been in compliance in 2008 to 2011, between the floods, or when the consumer are following the two floods. The process was biocore. It is similar to biosphere in the same way a locker beer is similar to ale, going from the bottom to the top, total difference. Being an intensive water shed, we are helping some of the tightest government standards in the country. Our opponent was scheduled to be in compliance with tighter limits last year, but Jacobs, the project management, and construction found out schedule repeatedly, and the plant, community, paying that increased D E C compliance for failing to hit goals of treatment levels, that the project managers proposed themselves and extension requests to D E C. I'd like to point out, the plant manager is highly professional, well-trained, and positions of civil service tested, competitive selection. I'm not sure how the mayor arrived at the conclusion that we are not stated the art management workforce. A tip to City Mayor, the benefit and doubt is just ignorant of what is being documented in the plant, and the current damage infrastructure we're working with. It should be noticed that we continually lose employees in wastewater plants in other communities because they are skilled and well-trained and very able to operate modern systems. The staff team here looking forward and assisted, we have believed it's all our, the project management, the complete, and very what much wish to remain civil service employees. Well, with sabotaging plant staff and media, the mayor should be presented achievement health, but I don't believe he really knows what goes on in the plant. It is shameful. The only time he mentions the plant staff is in the solace. Believe me, we are cost efficient here. The majority of employees are angle much of how it's not related to operations. It is overhead absorption of longer long systems costs of gas service. Those won't go away. It's not like property taxes that you reduce or the tax, they discover, and... I understand the need behind the plant efficiency. But I wish it made clear that the current staff is the most high-drink crew, and is not running the largest wastewater treatment lab in the Sault Ste. Anne River in Newport, despite the natural disasters and destruction stations and issues. Of course, I'm handing off site with short notice and rate clear as expense for a full year because of poor planning. The app manager did ask for a new design, did not ask for this new design, had no appointment in selection, quite quick oversight of the destruction. Staff is being trained on new equipment and process. You're paying for that. We are ready and capable of operating, but shooting stain air facility, once the private director's correct, all their risks and start shooting dead markets. I cannot imagine why the private manager did not have a full-time office at the site instead of a part-time position at the city hall. Do you, as media, secretly receive a block that is ours for the site project? You should. In closing, I'd like to remind the owners that there is no gamble in pure expression. In recent past, quite frankly, there's some possible unfavorable weather, just come in under budget. That savings is passed back to the municipal office, and it pay only what it actually costs to run the plant. No more. We always break the... A private company builds equity from their owners and shareholders, but they will build based on their proposal, and will also be entitled to a practical benefit of that proposal, and who pays for their profits? Who will pay for their change orders and overruns? These are the same people who are building the plant all night. And just the city won't be receiving the credit they have, and it will be built, and the cash flow will be suffering.
Thank you. Everybody else, would you come down?
Hello, my name is Terry Grinney. I live at Five Jenkins Street. I was here at your last business meeting to talk about this very topic, and I'm really happy to see that, uh, it seems like a lot more people are getting interested in this, and a lot more people are starting to be passionate about it. I'm really sad to see that it's all being done at the expense of so many of the folks sitting behind it. These folks work for us. We have a responsibility to see that they're treated fairly. I think it's, you know, whoever said that, you know, the word about the retirees have questions, the current employees have questions, those are all really legitimate questions. And if we're going to be honest, this administration really has not put a high value on employees, and especially on retirees. It wasn't too long ago that retirees found out their health insurance was going up with zero notice. I believe that had to be pulled back because, again, passionate people had to come and advocate. They shouldn't have to advocate for themselves after they've put all their tears in. And this body has a responsibility to make sure that the employees are not caught in that position. I want to get quickly back to what I was talking about the last time, because I didn't get through all my notes, but before I do, I do want to clarify something about the study. There was indeed a study done. It was authorized last fall. I asked at the end of the last meeting if anyone has seen it, and the council members that I was speaking to after the meeting, none of them had seen it. So I'm going to ask again. Has anyone seen the study that was authorized and paid for in the fall that was supposed to study the best way to manage the new plant?
Nope.
Okay. So, a study has been done. This body voted on the money to do the study, and then you never tried. Anybody going to ask for it? I'll foil for it. Shouldn't have to, but I will. Um, that's really gross. I mean, there's just no other way to say it. If this body is willing to sit back and watch yourselves cut out of all of the decisions, then really, you don't belong here. We need elected officials who are going to work for us. I want to say, again, referring back to what I was talking to before, one of the statements that the mayor has made is that, uh, he wants to make sure, he wants to hire private operators to ensure, and I'm quoting here, "to ensure that history doesn't repeat itself." Let's be really clear on the history here. The wall collapse that occurred prior to any of the damage to the flooding, which no one can predict, but the wall collapse that occurred before that occurred because of multi-construction that was done twenty or twenty-five years ago. I don't know exactly how long ago. But I also want to point out, and I know some of you on this board are aware, but possibly not all of you, and I'm sure that some of the people behind me are aware, that this administration then turned around and hired the same people who are responsible for the faulty construction. Many of the same people, not all the same people. So for someone who's concerned about history repeating itself, it repeating itself, he wasn't very concerned then. The RFP has a decision called out for a committee that's supposed to be making the decisions. So, on the committee is supposed to sit one member of this body. Can I ask who that is? Hasn't been appointed. So, there's someone on the decision-making team for an eight-hundred-page RFP that we all know is going to cost millions of dollars, while the decisions are already moving right along here, and none of you have been involved. Look, I could go on and on. Here's the thing. The real problem here are the folks behind me, and my heart breaks in that. But an even bigger problem is every single person who pays for that plant, which is them, and us, and hundreds of thousands of others. This is going to be untenable. And this body, you folks who were elected by the residents of this city to represent them, have a responsibility. It's time. It's time to step up and speak up, please.
Please email me your thoughts.
I will.
The City Council, take your first.
Well, okay, I'm in.
Thank you.
I'm here for a slightly different mission. I apologize.
No, that's all right.
My name is PJ Graham. I'm just a man. I have a property on Front Street. So, uh, my property on Front Street is Swireburg, which also my landlord has tenanted the building. So there is an idea. I've kind of been around, but not here. I went to a planning board meeting a couple of months ago when a managing official was in this room. A managing official was going to buy, and they have a mansion, and Turkey has two housing, and fortunately, that thing all worked out. So I was here then. And I'm here tonight because I spoke with Dan, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, because there's a house in my neighborhood, we forget it, that has been driven to a, I don't know, boarding house, rooming house, loading out and delivers to room one, room two, room three, and room four. It's not a family, it's not even a functional family. I've learned about that functional family law, which I understand really was for students in the community, of which I was one a year ago. I have a lot of concerns about room one, room two, room three, and room four, as I did with Josh Kiship buying the paint building, determining if it's still housing. There were six police calls that were talking with neighbors. There are neighbors who say they don't feel safe in their neighborhood. There was at least one ambulance that came along with the police call. I'm not sure what that means or how the content of the police calls or the ambulance calls. But clearly, there is an issue when absentee landlord, man votes building this in France, when absentee landlord can turn it over to the property manager, who runs it to people who really aren't part of the neighborhood. So, my thought is that the departments of the city that I spoke with, so for example, whenever I call, T doesn't like to, you know, whenever I call, I kind of get sent here, and I pop here, and I get sent there, you know, I get sent around. I feel like any planning, any code, any city council doesn't work well enough together. Anyone has a, not with the other hand, so, you know. I guess I'm concerned about, having been on my street for thirty years, I wouldn't have been in your system. And things are really changing here. A couple of years ago, on Johnson, when we had a drug house, that's what, it's one house that wants to change the function of the neighborhood. And when my daughter, who's at high school, said, Mom, is that a shut? Well, it could have been our bad, but we have a drug house in your neighborhood. Everything changes. Now, those folks did move out. I called the guy who owned the house, and it did move out. The guy moved in. Well, the guy just moved out. Husband for auction, I'm going to leave. I don't know who's going to buy it. I think Gavin Adams in the Bronx, maybe somebody else who doesn't live here, but when you live here, you care about the community. So my building on Front Street, said, well, she really cares about her building. It's amended and repaired and painted and taken care of. And if things get out of order, I handle it. Get Evan Adams in the Bronx, can handle what's going on in his building at twenty-three and a half. Prior to his ownership, that building, the Cuskey family owned that house. How do I know this? Because I'm a lifelong community resident, I went to high school with the Cuskey boys. When my mother died, he sold the house at some... When my mother died, he sold the house at some point. People do sell houses, and they don't really care. They can't really, they can't really plan to sell to the right person, to sell to the wrong person. So my hope is, by coming here tonight, we can look for a strategy to come together a little better and maybe demand that landlords live around here and tend to their properties. Folks that are having more police encounters, ambulance calls, that, you know, family barbecues aren't resided. And I'm going to... So that's, that's, you know... That might have sounded sly to me, but it's a huge concern. It only takes one house. And if police calls mean drugs, if police calls mean guns, they're children, they're old people, and we shouldn't be unsavory.
Thank you very much. One thing, I have had the same problem in my district. It's the councilman I have got, which department involved, and we had Detective Fair, and then we've had a few other residents in certain neighborhoods all together with Detective Fair. As one, having taken, he was excellent.
Well, how would that help? How would that bring relief to towns? Certainly, if you could talk about this in the neighborhood.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you have one need placed in your councilman, get a hold of Detective's department, Detective Fair. He's very, very good about helping you out.
But my thought is, my thought is, it really, it needs to be bigger than me having to sit down with my neighbors. There are rules in place. Such a functional family, all of its neighbors, two, three years ago.
Mr. Bailey, thank you for your comment. We'll look into investing in the issues of, you know, daily care, the vision of the building, and what happens in active, global actions of the property. Putting it forward and how we think it's going to be done.
You're welcome. Proceeds. I'm suggesting that the law should be changed.
Great.
Thank you for coming up.
I want to see if there is anything for everybody. If there's a bill, suggest legislation. Look if it is, if it works on this. Also, look if it's online. Fill it out. Counsel, if you have anything to counsel. If there's specific ideas on what to change, please go ahead and ask the citizens to make a request.
Anybody else who can come down and speak, yourself?
Is there a similar accord that you can ask the city to enforce the law that's already on the books? Or is that a different accord?
Yep. Go ahead and call it out. I'll take it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Donan. I'm president of the Law Labor Group 785 in the Broontier Road from Central Labor Council. So I fought for the PLA to strengthen the plan. Councilman had strapped on, so you're well aware of that. And it ended up getting shot down. We really felt like city council and especially the mayor turned their back on the union trade employees in this area. Now, seeing the way that this private taxation is going, it looks like you're also going to turn your backs on the CSCA and the public civil service workers that support the treatment plan. So I'm going to make this very brief and say, as the way this is turning out, all I have to say is this is good old-fashioned unionism. And one thing about the unions and the history of the unions are we don't go away, we come back stronger. So we're going to fight you guys on this process. We're going to enforce transparency, and we're going to do everything equally as a union organizer I've just talked to do to make sure that this is hopped up the way that board deals with it now with this administration. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else who's going to come down and speak, please do.
Good day, everyone. I've got a second for us to get this stuff. My name's Michael Losquez. From Harvard in Binghamton. I think pretty much everyone in the city council knows me. A couple of people in the audience know me as well. I had not intended to come down to speak today on the subject of, I mean, I said. I had wanted to speak about the last meeting, when no one else showed up. And we were here. And we were speaking about some of the issues that center hall on East Street. I wanted to address that. But I also, what I wanted to say quite the second is to give a pause, because there's a lot of politics going on right now. There's a lot of aggression. A lot of people have been called out. There's been a lot of these statements, there have been a lot of these adjurations. And I understand that people are throwing passion, me as well as many others. And we should express our passions without necessarily having to attack the individuals, without necessarily making allegations that are untrue, without necessarily making very political statements that sell really well in videos and on radio programs that not necessarily help the government move forward. Yes, the city council at times deserves to be criticized. I've done it, many others, both parties, and any individual, of course. That's why we have the public stake. And I commend that. I also think that when we see the way the politics have happened, that it needs to be called out as well. I would love to see many of the people who are behind it right now with that showing up one time this entire year, to show up at every meeting as I have done. I would love for many of the people who are in political stances at the moment to come down to see how the council has worked very hard. And I commend them all for that. Even when I disagree with you, I commend you that you do your work. Can we do better? Absolutely. Are there questions? Without a doubt. I commend the discussion and the disagreement on set of Hall East Street. I do believe there are issues there. I can recommend myself. If we hold that off, I mean, that's what's going to be happening. And that's what I intended to talk about. But I think we need the moment to remember that you are all members of our community. You share in everything and the consequences of everything you decide with us. I don't believe anyone needs to be berated or used as a hood upon to make a political point. That's not necessarily what this is for. But I hope that the people that pause and provide allows us all to come on, because I know some are aggravating me. I'm sure we'll aggravate some of those who are watching some video. But let's get back to the business of the city to move forward, to get the best decisions possible, answer the questions that need to be answered, and to move forward together. And I do hope, again, that many people, especially some candidates who are running and have ever been here before, come in next week, the next session, I'm going to be here. End the session after that. And after that, to be part of the process rather than part of the politics. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Anybody else who's going to come down and speak, please do. Seeing none, we will move on to our... For the general.
Introducing resolution 1940, considering employees. A resolution approving an agreement between the City of Binghamton and International Brotherhood of Teachers, Article 317, providing student for 2018 to 2012.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Strangton? Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any contract or renegotiation radical? I mean, before us, we have the CSCA wanting to propose right now. If you want to thank first and foremost all of our city employees who are represented by the union more than you do, particularly as it relates to snowplowing. There have definitely been some major changes. It sounds like there was a good fight going on with agreement on it, both on the administrative side as well as on the team side, which will be being approved from what my understanding is, quite a bit of a high level. It's great to see that for city residents, we were also able to add into this new contract a back-up snowpland, which is something that we have asked a number of these legislators about, as well as discussed quite a bit, with the implementation of ensuring that there is full coverage and a haul-on plan for Friday evening, or hallway for Sunday. So a lot of, I don't know, a lot of, there's a lot of light towards this and this port, and I hope that will also be good. Thank you. Anybody else who's... Councilman Lewis, say.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to really echo some of what Congressman Strangton said. You know, it's not, it's not a day you get such strong support from, you know, you file, or, you know, such approval from city health staff on a contract. Really hoping that this helps to resolve a lot of the issues in the city around the snow. Snow that we've seen over the last few years. And I'm looking forward to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? All questions? Questions, McCall?
Councilman Strangton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilman Masa?
Aye.
That is six A's and one absence.
Resolution 1940 passed. Not to or not to the general.
Introducing 1952, considers your planning...
According to Councilman Castra.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for your, uh, well, just for your perception of ordinance, and the trip to the Journal Stop Drive sale assistance section to pervert sales signs. Or procedure. This is what is taken from how you view it, and start with motions to compare to City Council DA and senior prosecutor.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Then I would like the motion to identify the proposed action that's unlisted and received.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
And, um, thirdly, motion to issue a declaration of theater for the boundaries. This is a vacant lot. Mr. Simon still across the street and has agreed to maintain priority. Priority to be taken. And engaging use of the existing driveway for transfer of the future, provided that it's...
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Councilman Strangton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilman Masa?
Aye.
That's six A's, one absence.
Secret has been approved. Under to legislation. Our team resolution 1952. Councilman Castra.
Mr. President, as you asked, we have a simple approval of the decree, ordinance 1952.
Second.
This is an ordinance authorized in the sale assistance section to pervert sales signs.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. President. How, this is a great, another great example for giving of sideline programs. A gentleman who had a fifth in the property lives right across the street and will maintain his, had a great space under title of residence. Thank you, Mr. President. Any other candidates? All questions? Questions, McCall?
Councilman Strangton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilman Masa?
Aye.
That's six A's, one absence.
Under to... Resolution 1953. Ordinance 1953. That would be Councilman Castra.
On the opposite, we have the announcement approval of ordinance 1953.
Second.
This is the ordinance authorized the mayor to set 18,000, 207 gallons per cent in funding from the Broontier County Government ground field fund, free demolition and destruction to amend the capital budget for.
Questions or comments? All right. Questions, McCall?
Councilman Strangton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilman Masa?
Aye.
That is six A's, one absence.
Under to introductory ordinance 1954, Finance, Councilman Castra.
Mr. President, we have the announcement approval of ordinance 1954.
Second.
This is the ordinance to amend the 2019 budget to the city, to the city budget, traditional appropriation, capital budget, approved for there.
Questions or comments?
All questions.
Questions, McCall?
Councilman Strangton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilman Masa?
Aye.
That's six A's, one absence.
Sorry, Councilman Strangton. Under to introductory ordinance 1955, Finance, Councilman Castra.
Sir. I'd like to ask for, yes, you will have the introductory ordinance, 1955.
Second.
This is the ordinance to amend the 2019 plan, its own budget, to increase the salary of the plant.
Questions or comments on this one? It's great. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for residents here watching at home, the last video was just a bunch of transfer for prepared, and this pickings of legislation to adjust about salary due to a latency. So that salary already exists. Or a question. Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? All questions, Mr. President? Questions, McCall?
Councilman Strangton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilman Masa?
Aye.
That's six A's, one absence.
Under to 1956, again, Finance, Councilman Castra.
Mr. President, we have the announcement approval of ordinance 1956.
Second.
This is the ordinance to amend the 2019 risk management budget, providing responsibility adjustment to the secretary of the Corporation Council for administration of workers' compensation.
Comments? It's great. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, the office of Corporation Council obviously is a lot. It's a big responsibility adjustment here, not in terms of money, but just in terms of the amount of work put here, so that, uh, I don't have to... Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? All questions, sir? Questions, McCall?
Councilman Strangton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
That's six As, one absence.
Under to ordinance nineteen fifty-seven. Again, this would be the finance Councilman Castra. Do you feel like an upgrade to pick up your own staff?
Would you ask me now to approve? Ordinance nineteen fifty-seven?
Second.
This is the ordinance to amend the twenty nineteen law on personnel service budget. To increase the annual salary of the leave employees.
Comments or questions on this?
Councilman Scruton. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, for residents watching at home, this is due to a vacancy to adjusting a salary which already has no way possible.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? All questions? Questions, Nicole?
Councilman Scruton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
That is six As, one absence.
Under to nineteen fifty-eight, Councilman Castra. Thank you, Mr. President. Very well.
Would you ask me now to approve? Ordinance nineteen fifty-eight?
Second.
This is the ordinance to amend the twenty nineteen union development administration budget. To fund the housing program supervisor and every new position referred to as housing dispatches.
Comments?
Councilman Scruton. Thank you, Mr. President. Again, for residents watching at home, every so often, always looking at the budget, like you have things like seasonal realities changes for city residents and needs. Um, when one physician is not apparently the pump. Who supplement by something that is better. Uh, sue you for the responsibility that you better need it. In case such a risk we do this now right here in practice. Thank you, Councilman. Any comments?
All questions.
Questions, Nicole?
Councilman Scruton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
Six As, one absence.
Under to ordinance nineteen thirty-nine. Councilman Castra.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you ask me now to approve? Order nineteen fifty-nine?
Second.
This is the ordinance to amend the twenty nineteen budget to answer refunds from public health, health inspections and repairs.
Questions or comments on this?
Councilman Scruton. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, for our city residents, uh, this is actually, uh, something required at the city of Vinington. This is a required report to the city of Vinington. Wants to be hot here, so they can read to the assets of the town.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? Nicole?
Councilman Scruton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross? Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
Six As, one absence.
Under to resolution nineteen forty-one, this is not Councilman Castra. This is Councilman Scruton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to ask for unanimous consideration for uh, introductory resolution nineteen dash forty-one. Second. Resolution authorizing the city of Vinington to accept the donation of services by Sage Streets and Javelin Studios. While see for repair of the mosaic wall at Wall Street. Uh, Walmart Street Park. Again, um, this is uh, Javelin Studios, they've done some uh, pretty amazing mosaics uh, practices in the city. Uh, through different areas around the town.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? All questions, Mr. President. Questions, Nicole?
Councilman Scruton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross? Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
Six As, one absence.
Under to resolution nineteen forty-two, considered finance Councilman Castra.
Would you like to add your question?
Why not?
Would you ask me now to approve? Resolution nineteen fifty-two?
Second.
The resolution authorizing the mayor to enter agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation. For the Holly Street, March Street, practice to develop a number of nine seven five or one three seven. For form preliminary engineering design and road uh, and roads and.
Comments or questions, Councilman Castra? Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, this, as well as the next piece of legislation, uh, is part of a critical plan to make the city of Vinington more friendly investing. Uh, I think a lot of urban planners throughout the country, you know, across the globe, see pedestrian friendly style infrastructure as critical to a modern city. A critical part of a rejuvenating city like ours. And I'm glad to see that we're prioritizing this. If the corner at Holly Street and Washington is one of many corners in the city of Vinington that has lacked this type of pedestrian safety infrastructure for years. Nice to see that this corner is getting that, as well as a number of other ones, seeing the next piece of legislation. Um, but you know, I hope it's the beginning of investment, desperate advice, safety enhancement here.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions?
Councilman Scruton. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think it's just important, you know, for our residents of homeowners as well, where there's actually a federal.
Thank you, Councilman. All questions, Mr. President. Questions, Nicole?
Councilman Scruton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
That's six As, one absence.
Uh, to resolution nineteen forty-three, considered finance Councilman Castra.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you ask me now to approve? Resolution nineteen forty-three?
Second.
The resolution authorized the mayor to enter agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for pedestrian safety improvements project. Number nine seven five four one six three. Engineering design.
Comments or questions on this, Councilman Scruton?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Councilman Taylor alluded to earlier, these are uh, two pairs of, a pair of two pieces of legislation gathered together. The second one is just appropriated most likely. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. President. Any other comments or questions? All questions, Mr. President.
Questions, Nicole?
Councilman Scruton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
That's six As, one absence.
Under to resolution nineteen forty-four, considered finance one more time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Would you ask for, would you ask for resolution nineteen fifty-four?
Second.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a one-year partnership extension. In conjunction with a one-year lease extension. The P O C N E I D A requires that the practice of.
Comments or questions on this? Councilman Taylor?
Thank you. Um. Yeah, I, I thought pretty hard about this. Uh, you know, I can't see myself voting for this, just simply because I uh, there is proof. Uh, or any documentation of the one million dollars repairs uh, being dumped uh, in the previous year pilot briefing. Uh, so I don't think I would vote for this.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions on this? Councilman Castra?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um. This take an ongoing thing because the building is in progress to repair. And if you look around, you see the ACs, Sears, the mall is uh, virtually closing down. Parks stores. For a city our size, we are so lucky to have parks of downtown. Order that's in entrance made to uh, into our downtown area. Between uh, the new Wells Brothers, Bridge Store and Bosco. It adds so much character to our downtown. Um. By not supporting these, these extensions so that we can find a beach or five-year agreement. Uh. What we're doing is jeopardizing losing a park store that very, very few cities have had. Most could have in the downtown area. And you see malls, stores closing. And why in the world would we play with something for a one-year extension or lease agreement? Uh, is it political or is it? I mean, Bosco has been operating in downtown cities. These things have been going on. This is nothing new. These kind of were beginning to have taken place uh, in the last twenty years. Because it's one of those situations where uh, they always have to look at their bottom line. They want to say, what's, what's it possible? And. Can I support this for a one-year lease agreement with the party? To keep them operating until the administration and city council work out a permanent kind of contract with uh, with Bosco. And it's just uh, I think it's very.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments, Councilman Taylor?
Thank you. Um, yeah, from my perspective here, uh, this isn't just a lease agreement that has to be parking. This is still an agreement with the I D A. It does extend also the pilot agreement. Uh, however you want to call it, uh, regarding the Bosco's property. Uh, they now have this, you know, pilot for anywhere between uh, thirty and forty years. As part of the previous five-year pilot extension, there was a deal made between the city and Bosco. They paid a million dollars to work into this property. There's no documentation of that ever happening. If they couldn't fulfill that deal, why do they think that they, why do we think that they fulfill the next deal? That's not like pretty bad deal making on behalf of the city. And uh, I just think about, you know, all the new and exciting and important small businesses that we see popping up down in Vinington. That aren't getting tax breaks from the city of Vinington. And it's just hard for me to justify any sort of extension when it seems to me, like from my perspective, uh, like uh, it's, we are subsidizing uh, something that we shouldn't be subsidizing anymore. Especially when the deals that have been created uh, between the two parties aren't being met. And it's seem to be awful. Uh, it's something that I give a lot of thought to. I empathize and agree with a lot of, a lot of what you're saying, uh, Councilman Castra. But I think that's where um, my head has uh, gone to on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? Councilwoman in the room?
Yeah, we get a million dollars for revenue sales. So there's one comment, it's a secret. Um, and also, that's a huge building. We have a new Bosco, which is lost to be there, despite it being there. Even though they don't make a lot of money, they're still planning to be there. And we're gonna have many, many buildings, we build downtown. And always rather than get a hotel, because it's too big. I don't want to have a grand building. Rather than try to work, yeah. Maybe there's something that city needs to bend, or there's something remaining for that. Let's find a way to, to come to an agreement and compromise instead of just outing somebody that's been here for a long time. Still trying to be here.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments or questions? Councilman? Was, no, I wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't go on. Sorry, I'm looking surgery, I have a little angle. Um. There's legitimate concerns here on both sides. Um, let's, let's, let's be, one would just kind of call it for what it is. It is a legitimate concern that uh, if there is something contractual nature. I e, some set amount of dollars for the purpose of repairs, and that hasn't been done yet. That's a legitimate concern, uh, that needs to get done. Um, I actually did do some homework, uh, myself on this. I actually worked with the city clerk's office and uh, we're actually able to pull the original piece of legislation. Nineteen forty-four. Same four eight five. Um, and actually saw the court down. And we just agreed that the L D C, got the idea how they fit into that uh, entire arrangement. Uh, over the course of the last, my goodness, thirty something years now at this point. Uh, coming into the eighties, um, the last five-year agreement, we ended in two thousand and fifteen, I believe it was. Um, and this body actually, I don't remember if it was Ucanis or not, uh, but I think overwhelmingly with authority, uh, the out of bare minimum. Uh, passed it again. Uh, I do agree, again, that these costs are a concern. Um. But in this particular lease agreement, uh, no terms change whatsoever. Uh, it is literally an extension of what is currently already in place. And because nothing contractually changes, and this one-year agreement has been done a number of times before. It allows for some breathing room on both sides to make a more conscientious five-year agreement where terms can be amenable and be made to, so it actually supports not just Bosco, but ultimately, of course, the community as well. Uh, and considering the uptick in the economy and economic activity that we've seen, um, I want our fifty-fifty group county split of over a million dollars in sales. Um, I know I have a number of seniors, uh, as I think we all do, uh, throughout the city of Vinington, that are, um, for both sentimental as well as practical reasons and why is shop old, uh, that they go to Bosco, right? Uh, Bosco is almost, needs for people in person district, and especially for warders. Uh, it's almost kind of like the downtown version of Philly Sam's, right? It's just, there's such a, there's such a sentiment elaboration to it. So uh, I don't disagree. I think, uh, I think both sides make uh, very valid points. Um, and I think, given uh, that there really isn't much to a risk of personal nature, that we don't lose anything. Um, and that we are holding a fiduciary duty to the constituents that we represent. Uh, both mathematically and data-wise, it makes sense because we get more than what we lose. Uh, so uh, I do hope, and I will agree with Councilman Taylor, that I do hope that we will see a five-year agreement with amenable terms on both sides where the people come together. Uh, so that way, uh, we see more commitment, uh, both from the city of Vinington as well as Bosco. So uh, given those realities, we have good points to make on both sides. And I hope that there is clarification, which is, I will be supporting this, and I uh, work my policies. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? Any other questions, Nicole?
Councilman Scruton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Castra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Massa?
Aye.
That is four As, two NAs. Taylor, Livingston, one.
Resolution nineteen forty-four. Thank you. Uh, two communications from council members and officers today for the Councilman Livingston.
Well, first. I guess I'm, um, I, I guess I just have one thing to talk about. Um, I guess I'm a little concerned, um, about the, I guess I would call lack of transparency, not having uh, a city successor come to answer questions, um, to the city council or session. Um, I'm particularly concerned that, um, about how this, this process seems to work. Um, seems like, and I think this is the same thing with the pipe development. Whether instead of as, as a body, um, asserting authority to provide oversight of City Hall. Um, we request, uh, from City Hall that they, that they, uh, provide us with the ability to provide oversight of it. Um, and I think that's really just not what the city council is supposed to do. It was supposed to be a check and balance for City Hall. Um, and I guess, I just the fact that it took me over to answer from the city successor, especially when Councilman Massa on two occasions, uh, said he would like to have the successor come there and answer questions. It just seems like we have a great responsibility. You know, we're supposed to be the check, provide balance inside City Hall. And we don't need a task mission to do this. Oversight is our charge. It's our duty, and that's why we don't let it to office.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Wood.
Hi, Mr. President. On, on June tenth, that posting is the West Side Pride Watch. We're really, really doing well. Um, we're actually going up for some plans to go after someone I know. More than I gave my card. And stated, um, this is an issue that we have a lot of problems. And I was just bringing whoever to worry for this, and it is the one with responsibility to make a good thing for this, and I will hold up. Those standards. Um, I just wanted to say that we will have, uh, a public forum for which we wish to see this common couple. On June twenty, that's six A, right here at the council chambers. Um, we're going to be owners to get this forward. I'm very excited. Uh, it's huge enough, we have enough that we can actually put some things in that for you that we'd like to see as well. So I'm excited about that. Um, and there's just one thing that I did want to bring up, just to breathe through the awareness of the community. Especially in the retirement, it is that when the retirement, uh, program ran out. It was not from the city council that is in money now, which actually through the two thousand sixteen. When Terry Bennett was in city council and it was her job to fill it out, she did not put any work through. Um, not over this, I see that. Um. At least if we're going to help the city council, I should like to point. Um, with that, happy end.
Under to Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, Councilman. Very welcome, Councilman. Um. I'd like to start off by, uh, thanking everyone who voted. And you have school board elections. Uh, these school board elections are very, very important. Critical part of our local government ecosystem. Congratulations to Cory Kirkland, Steve Seacott, that won the two available seats. You know, I look forward to working with both of you, obviously. Uh, City Hall and the school board work closely together in many respects. Uh, for those watching that uh aren't aware, there's been a discussion uh around the Seven Holly Street project recently. Uh, we were supposed to talk about that this evening, actually. Um, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank my fellow members of the council for, I guess, demanding accountability to a certain extent. At the last business meeting, uh, city council held over legislation because council as a whole and most council members had a number of questions about the Seven Holly Street project that could not be answered uh by uh by the, by the city administration. So we, you know, as the watchdogs towards the climate of the projects, took upon ourselves to say, listen, you know, I think in, in, in round three of consideration of this project, it's time that we have a discussion about these questions. Developers and developers, I guess, have not been able to make it or something. Um, so uh, I'd like to, you know, thank uh fellow members of the council. Who really noted that uh we need to make sure what's going on here before we move forward. That's a really important thing. You know, what is the status of this project? What is the timeline? Why hasn't there an environmental study been done or a parcel? Uh, what are the questions surrounding the entire state development? Is it possible that this is no longer a mixed-use project or an apartment-grade project? It's a really important questions that we get asked by developers. So we'll make sure to stay on that. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone that came down to speak tonight, um, specifically about the request proposals surrounding the privatization of the Goin' Water Treatment Plant. Uh, it, it, it's really, you know, tough to listen to everything that was said today. It almost sounded like over one year in a month. You know, we've, we've let down our employees. Uh, that's really what I took from this the most, that, you know, we have employees that work for us, that work so hard for us, uh, public employees, union employees, uh, day and night to make sure that um the residents of our city, you know, can use the bathroom, take a shower. Uh, you know, we can at least inform them of what's going on. And the truth is that what's really frustrating about this situation is that I can't inform them of what's going on. Because even as a member of the city council, I have no idea what's going on. There was no indication of there was going to be a request proposal sent out, whether or not we're, that we're going to be privatizing the treatment plant. There was an article in the paper, where the direct quote from the mayor of Congress, we want to say about it, saying that that is happening. And now we're stuck in a situation where we've got a deadline from this art keeps weeks away and no information about it. Here, no information about it among the employees. It's a really dangerous situation at the end. I hope that we can rectify that and we can say, hey, my first step, I definitely taking the tour of the plant. I think council is really expensive at the time. You know, I'll extend that invitation to any other member of council this Friday at eleven uh to sort of get our own view of what's going on there. Uh, so let's just stay diligent on that because uh, you know, where I, where I believe Mr. Vasquez is that this isn't one at all. This is about the largest project and the largest and most significant uh structure that owned by the city of New York. So it's, it's very, very important. Um, and I hope that, you know, we just stay on top of that now that we have some idea what's going on. That's it for me today. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor. Councilman Papst.
I'm glad you're here. Thank you, Mr. Redd. But uh, I want to thank everyone that came down to speak, your choice system and from uh other speakers that were here. Uh, you have some legitimate questions. I'm going to try to uh get the right answers for you on what's going on at the time. Um, I was kind of with Mark Moore, Mr. Moore was one of the first speakers of the conference recently. Uh, and he's been coming years since two thousand four and he's great. He's, he's been a, uh, quite a advocate for, uh, he's, I believe he was the property manager for Marsh Apartments, uh, operation. And he's also been an advocate and for landlords through the years that I've been on this people. And what he's mentioned about curfew, we did toy with the idea of curfew back in two thousand four or five because uh people were concerned about cleaning the street out after ten o'clock and uh causing a lot of chaotic situations. And so I think what brought that back up is what happened a week or so ago. Uh, you know, these are three things that, uh, that just coupled with the older man and his daughter. So uh, very difficult to do a curfew. You have to have a facility, they have to house uh young men and young women uh in a facility, they have to have a major. It just becomes a very difficult situation. Many of them have parents that will participate, you know, if you all have seen on your, or your, or your city hall, uh, they may have to come down to the mall, maybe somewhere near Brooklyn. So that's a big responsibility of the parents in issue. And I remember when I served in the curfew and it had to happen. So it wasn't the city that did it, it was the parents. So I hope you can have some hands. So the way that they're about to come to United Avenue, this is a situation to have throughout the whole city where it's time to have our landlords, plenty of good and bad end of the city. The bikes are parking and they're looking to make a profit because maybe they're living. It's not the cycles of the motion. Mostly it's riding around, it's just a duty. So they don't want to take the time to go a month or two without a tenant because they want to, they want anything. But in the long run, if you actually get a tenant and a tenant turns out to be horrible tenant, it's going to cost you a lot more than that one or two months' time that you're going to lose if you waited to check. And if you get one bad tenant, you might lose very good, I mean, it's just one of those things. I wish landlords to be a little more careful about how they screen. And I mean, you're going to get hurt no matter what, no matter how good you are, how many applications you have. You look at a tenant, you'll put in and you think it's a, uh, tenant from heaven and even later you'll find out it's the reverse. So I mean, I've been a, uh, I've been a big landlord right here for obvious experience on the side there. And it's, I tell you, there's slow lords and there's slow tenants. A lot of times when they fight each other, that's what makes the uh situation not count. And that happens a lot in the city. And as far as Boskows, finally, I'll tell you, it's been here since the, uh, it's nineteen eighty-four and it's thirty-five years. It's thirty-five years, that's how long it's been. Uh, so they've been amazing downtown. They've gone through, uh, when downtown was a lot of empty buildings. They, they, they step around and now you hope that with the activity that's going down, the research that we're having, that they will be able to benefit from that also. Uh, and like I say, with what's going on in other cities, large apartments are closing down uh because the online business is terrible and so much rents are hurting them. And we have a situation downtown, we have a full-size apartment store. I mean, it doesn't get any better than you can buy anything you can think of on this Boskows. And uh, it will be a great loss.
Thank you, Councilman Papst. Uh, to Councilman Strangie?
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Uh, I do want to thank all of our city residents who came to our last first ward neighbor who watched me last week over at St. Mike's. Um, and I want to thank St. Mike's for always being such an incredibly gracious host. Um, I also want to thank our meet and past Brum County historian, Jerry Smith. Um, along with the uh Brum County Historical Society, he gave an incredible talk about the history of Vingston and more specifically, uh, the history of the war and the history all the way from quite literally the Civil War up until today. There were over three hundred people that had me. It was absolutely phenomenal. He put out this presentation and it was great Q and A afterward. It was great to catch up with him. Again, I want to just thank everyone who uh came out to enjoy a little bit of our history and kind of relive it a little bit on about the future. And I want to thank Father Jim and all the worshers over at uh St. Mike's Church as well for uh being such gracious hosts. I want to thank the uh city clerk for mentioning a letter that was received this week uh that was actually from a constituent that I represent, First District, Mr. Leon Gandermark, uh, greatly expressing his concerns with regard to the negative impacts that future hikes, quite frankly, uh, related to the Sewer Street Plant will have those with mixed income, uh, homeowners, seniors, and everyone, quite frankly. Um, and I can go with that one hundred percent. So I just wanted to add to, add to that as well. I want to thank everyone who came to tonight. Um, if you don't get told this very much, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Um, I've mentioned this quite a number of times, whether it's the Sewer Street Plant, whether it's uh our police officers, firefighters, our city attorneys, our DPW workers, parks. I mean, we can go on and on and on and on. Um, there are just dozens of people that are quite literally investing so much in our community that not only do they live here, raise a family here, um, but uh what they do for their day, evening, or night, or potentially even regular shift job is uh something functional to make sure that this city ticks and it runs. Um, and I think oftentimes we tend to forget about that, myself included. So thank you for everything you do. Um, I have myself voiced my concerns regarding uh privatization and the potential impact. Uh, my greatest concern is uh how that impacts ownership. I really liked that breakdown that you gave of four subcategories of management. That was really great to hear. Uh, whether it be operational, whether it be ownership, whether it be just things in administration, uh, the day-to-day things that go on that come out onto the boards of us, except for you professionals know. So, um, I really appreciated that. That was actually something I was thinking on touching on it. You uh elaborated, stated it much better than I could, so thank you. Um, oversight, the counterdoof, um, to be quite frank, uh, I think that we have actually the counterdoof, right? There's something on this agenda tonight that is not on it. We all know what it is. It's Seven Holly. Um, and it, uh, it was great to see the level of discussion that we had. Uh, again, there are, there are fair points on both sides. Um, I will be upfront with this. Everyone knows this here. I will vote against that project from the beginning. But um, with that being said, obviously we know that the party is the issue. Uh, hopefully this is something that we can turn around in a timely and efficient manner and move forward in a positive way. So, um, obviously we'll look at hand steps. I want to congratulate all of our young people who graduated from Sweet Vingston and this past weekend, Sweet Room, tomorrow evening, Davis College, we're giving it. I don't know when they're gonna, I should probably look that up. But congratulations to all of them. Very good wishes to you and your families, all of your hard work. And hopefully more and more of you younger people are staying here and being a part of our community. Um, last one, uh, Monday, it's more important. Um, I want to just take an opportunity to honor all of those who have served and died. Um, there's a very important distinction memorial that we want to remember, right? That is to specifically honor those who died in the service of the country. Uh, I want to thank all of them and their families and those who served. Um, we also have a court that's right, uh, Monday, straight out of Post Hades, over on Main Street, uh, going straight down all the way to the courthouse. Uh, so I hope you'll come out, support uh those who have served in the loss of their life and support their families and take a few minutes to not be political and uh really just um recognize our veterans. And that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Strangie. Uh, I want to also thank everybody that came tonight to speak. We are very, we do listen and we get into the hot of it, so I miss. And I'm, and I'm sorry for the breath. I really do. It's not a fun feeling. Uh, I also want to thank the DPW workers out there. I got a few phone calls from others. And I'm going to tell you what, I went to call and I stayed and they weren't bothering to question them. I didn't even have to call and on my side of town, which is Sixth Street and what a great job they're doing out there. And I really want to thank them and they've worked very hard in those two months. And they've been doing a wonderful job. Uh, I want to send my condolences to the George April family and to rest of the people. He was a wonderful man. I haven't known him. He was a member of the swing of the club also. And my heart goes out to him. He did a lot for this community. Today, I married one of my closest friends and uh I want to reach out to Paul Patterson's family. Give them my condolences once again. And with that, I will take the most, so we'll be here on the ground. Thank you very much.